All right, good evening, everybody. We will call the March tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting to order. All members are present this evening. We have just adjourned an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to New England Police Benevolent Association, Local One, the Police Patrolman Union, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Subsection three, and pursuant to Mass General Law, thirty-eight, Section twenty-two A, seven, to comply with an act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements. And finally, for the purpose of reviewing and considering the release of several executive session minutes. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, and thank you for joining us. We have first up, transmitting of treasury warrants. Thank you. We have, was this the second one? Yeah. The transmitting of treasury warrants, two-five-three-five, two-five-three-five-T, two-five-three-five-S, two-five-three-four, two-five-three-four-W, and two-five-three-four-T. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have the transmitting treasury warrant number two-five-three-five-W. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Four-zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, and we don't have any board minutes to approve tonight, but we're going to move into our appointments. Before we do, I just want to make a quick statement here. If yesterday you were driving home, or in the evening you looked outside, you may have seen a lot of police activity. Good news is, there was nothing wrong. Everybody's safe, but in fact, our police department was kind enough to escort the two thousand twenty-five state champion cheerleaders, Wilmington High School Cheerleading Team back from Worcester State. Yesterday, they won the state championship in Division Three for the winter cheerleading, and want to congratulate the entire team. Head coaches Kylie, the assistant coach Shannon, and the whole team did a wonderful job. They'll be representing the town of Wilmington and the New England's, the next stop for them, but obviously, a great accomplishment for all those young ladies who worked really, really hard all year long to prepare. So congratulations to their coaches, their team, their families, and the school. It was a great, great thing. And thanks to the police department for giving a nice escort home as they arrived back in town yesterday. Good stuff. Really, we're really proud of them. So congratulations to the girls. With that, we'll move into our first appointment, which is a public hearing. So we'll welcome you up to the table. If anybody's present that I'm about to call, but this is in regards to a right-of-way manager with Verizon on a request of a Verizon, New England, Reading Municipal Light to install one pole on Faulkner Avenue. I see the gentleman is going to join us, Gabriel, right?
No, he won't be joining.
Okay, Gabriel's not here. You are?
I'll present myself once I get over here.
Thank you.
First name Alexander, last name Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to, this is a public hearing, so we're going to make a motion to open the public hearing before we go any further, but I wanted to wish you a good evening.
Make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of opening this public hearing? That is unanimous. So sir, again, thank you for being here on behalf of Verizon. This is a public hearing for a request to install one pole on Faulkner Avenue. So again, if you could please give us a quick synopsis of the request, that'd be great.
Sure. As I mentioned, my name is Alexander Lassie Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O. I reside in Centing Cross Street, Marlboro, Massachusetts, and employ a Pike, P-I-K-E, Telecom Renewables LLC, an authorized contractor for Verizon, New England Incorporated. I've been asked by Verizon to speak on their behalf about the petition in front of you this evening. Verizon is petitioning to place one new standard wood utility pole to be numbered Pole Seventeen-S to be located on western side of Faulkner Avenue, approximately twenty-five feet from existing Pole Seventeen. Verizon is making this request due to a request by Reading Municipal Light. They are requesting to upgrade Pole Seventeen, and as part of that process, we identified an existing pole-to-tree guide going between Pole Seventeen and existing tree. Unfortunately, neither Verizon nor Reading Municipal allow pole-to-tree guides anymore, so we're placing a new support pole opposite Pole Seventeen. The new Pole Seventeen-S will be a standard wood utility pole, and it will match the height in class of new Pole Seventeen, which would be a forty-foot Class Two pole. Do you have any additional questions about this petition?
Thank you, Alex. I think we may. Whoever wants to go for it first, I know what you're thinking, but Mr. DePalma, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Has the pole been put up?
No.
Thank you.
It's an important question. Mr. Kira.
Is this going to be placed in the middle of a sidewalk?
There is no existing sidewalk on that side of Faulkner Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kira. Any further questions? Mr. Manager, all the abutting neighbors have been notified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open it up to the audience, see if anybody has any questions as it relates to this particular matter. Anyone like to be heard on this issue? Ma'am.
Just a quick question, if I may. When you say a support pole, is the existing Pole Seventeen going to be, have no serving purpose, or is it going to be a redundancy, or is it just to add signal strength to the area? Do you intend to take Pole Seventeen out eventually, so there's not a surplus of poles on Faulkner as it's a heavily traveled secondary road?
So a support pole basically is not designed to carry any cables or service wires, basically the wires that go from the cables over the residences. It's just there to support the pole. As I mentioned, right now, the pole is supported by an existing guide cable that goes over to a tree. So basically, the pole would be taking the place of that existing tree. Pole Seventeen will be upgraded because it has been requested by Reading Municipal. I don't know why they're requesting the upgrade. I'm guessing they, I saw that it was a single-phase electrical service in the area, so I'm guessing they're going to be running a three-phase service in the area, but unfortunately, I can't answer that. Why exactly they requested an upgrade for Pole Seventeen? The only thing I can answer is that as part of the upgrade, we have to deal with the pole-to-tree guide, which again, neither Verizon nor Reading Municipal accept anymore as standard due to the guide cable causing stress on the tree and all problems that can cause with the tree. And obviously, unlike poles, which can be easily replaced, we can't easily replace a tree, so that's why we're placing a new support pole on the opposite side of Pole Seventeen.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Okay, we are going to take a vote here to...
Mr. Bendel?
Good evening. We're going to take a vote to close the public hearing?
This is a public hearing?
One question that brought up another point. You talked about replacing Pole Seventeen. Is that, when you say replace it, are you going to remove that existing pole, or are you going to put a second pole, so it's like a double pole? Because I hate those double poles, to be honest with you.
So yes, we usually, so the process is, we place a double, a second pole right next to that one, and then once everybody's transferred, we remove the old pole.
Okay.
Any other question? Excuse me. Any other questions or comments from the board? Sir?
Good evening.
Your name is?
Kevin McDonald.
Thank you.
From what I understand, will a pole be a wooden pole with Creosote to prevent it from rotting?
Correct.
And is Creosote considered to be a toxic chemical?
Not that I'm aware of.
I guess the one question I have is, is a high water table in that area? And I was just wondering if you've checked with any of the abutters to see if any of them have a servicing drinking water well where this could be a negative impact on that well?
Well, I haven't received any notice that any of the abutters has contacted either Verizon or Reading Municipal about any issues with the pole. So as far as I'm aware, the pole should not affect any of their groundwater.
Okay, well, maybe the chairman had just done some homework. Mr. Bendel, can you tell us since the drinking water wells in town are all identified on GIS maps, if you've, before you take this vote tonight, if you've done your homework to see where the drinking water wells are in close proximity to this Creosoted pole?
I can tell you, Mr. McDonald, that all the neighbors were notified, Alex, and therefore, this is a public hearing, so they, anyone with a concern could have come forward this evening and brought that to the town's attention.
So it's my understanding that the way that neighbors get notified is by mail, and that's pretty much deemed a notification. If some neighbor is vacationing in Florida or not aware of these details, would the board consider checking this out before they take a vote, so that it's a responsible vote?
I think the board is going to feel pretty comfortable taking the vote tonight. All the neighbors were notified. If there was a change, perhaps the person moved out of town? We wouldn't know that, but we notified whoever's living at that home now.
And perhaps, perhaps you would have checked on the drinking water wells in the area?
I think we've done our homework here, and I appreciate that, the questions. Okay, we're going to call for the closing of the...
Well, if you've done your homework, would you like to present us with that information, Mr. Bendel?
Appreciate those questions.
Yeah, I know you appreciate it, but that's not, appreciating them is not an answer. So I would appreciate an answer and a responsible action.
Mr. Bendel, just a question. We have an approval from the DPW.
Correct.
So...
Yes, I feel, I feel pretty comfortable based on the information we have.
Is the approval from the Board of Health?
Thank you.
The Board of Health regulates wells, I believe. Is there, is there an approval from the Board of Health?
We're going to call for a motion to...
Make a motion to...
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote to close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and we will move to the vote to, for the approval of the install one pole at Faulkner Avenue. Is there a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maselli. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can you read who we got approvals from, please?
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was reviewed and approved by Paul Looney, the town engineer. DPW has reviewed the petition from Verizon and RMLD to install the support pole, and after review of the petition and field location, the DPW recommends the select board grant approval, provided a street opening permit application is filed with the Department of Public Works and approved. And we also received response from the Department of Planning and Conservation. They have no comments on this pole location, and appears to meet the exemption in the wetlands regulations, if within ten feet of pavement and at least ten feet from the wetlands.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Request is approved. Thank you for being here, Alex.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our next appointment, which is a request to obtain a common victual license for Uncle John's Ice Cream Creamery at the property located at two forty-eight Main Street. Is anybody present for this request? Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm John, Uncle John, I guess in this case.
Good evening, Uncle John.
Jonathan Macopolis is the name. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. And please, if you want to just tell us a little bit about the request or about your business, then perhaps the board might have some questions before we take a vote.
Sure. Yep, so it's an ice cream parlor, basically, so kind of like an indoor ice cream stand, if you will. So I'm going to be making my own ice cream, fresh, small batch ice cream. I'm going to be offering about twenty to twenty-five flavors. Hard serve ice cream, you can have your usual milkshake, sundaes. Going to be open, plan to be opened Wednesday through Sunday. The hours, we're going to be opening at twelve o'clock to eight or nine o'clock, depending on the day and the season, but plan to be open year-round. It's at two forty-eight Main Street in Wilmington, Wilmington Plaza. Just very excited to make the ice cream and serve it to my customers and have a nice time and, you know, welcoming, welcoming everybody for some ice cream. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Awesome, and I suspect there may be. We've got some, some big ice cream fans up here, including myself, so. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. West.
Yes, I'm trying to say, do I talk to, do I say Uncle John?
John, John will suffice.
First of all, welcome to Wilmington, as far as this goes. Just curious, where in the plaza, which I know there's some vacant storefronts, so I was just curious which storefront you're...
Yep, so it used to be previously occupied by Flaherty Jewelers, so a few stores down from Market Basket. Yep.
And it's both hard and soft ice cream?
Hard to start off with. I may introduce soft in the future, but right now, it's going to be hard ice cream, but you'll have your milkshakes and sundaes as well, so.
Any other products that strictly ice, strictly going to be like ice cream and ice cream related?
Correct.
Type drinks?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maselli. Thank you. Welcome. We're excited to have you. If I may ask, is this your first venture into making ice cream? What made you want to do it?
Yeah, so I've always, I'm half Greek, half Italian, so food's kind of in my blood, as I like to say. So I've always, you know, grown up, like, watching my father and mother, you know, cooking and baking and stuff, and I've always had an affinity for junk food, ice cream in particular. So I've pretty much have an obsession with it, and over the past, like, few years, I've been studying it and researching and stuff, and making it my own for my family and friends and stuff. So I just, the more I began to learn about it and stuff and make it, I just, my passion fortress got even bigger and bigger by the day. So I just realized, you know, why don't I make this into a business where I can serve everybody and give everybody a great product, not just my friends and family? So I figured it would be the perfect, you know, avenue to do so. So just really excited to do it and really looking forward to it. That's all I think about every day, so just stuff I can do to make myself different and differentiate myself between me and other ice cream stores and parlors and stuff, and just do something that, you know, just a big interpersonal type of environment, not just here's an ice cream, I'll see you later. It's kind of like a family type thing where, you know, hopefully you'll come and I'll serve you and, you know, just make it a nice experience. So just really looking forward to it.
Well, I can tell you're very passionate and excited about it, so I think that's awesome, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Many sleepless nights, just thinking of things to do and different flavors and...
Yeah, yeah.
Things to, you know, make it really work, so thank you.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you.
When are you planning on opening?
Yep, so beginning of May.
May?
Yeah, yep.
It's a little late. I mean, I...
Well, I was too, but with our weather, I, even May could be like thirty-two degrees and snowing, so I was figuring, so.
And you're going to make all your products on, at site, right?
Yep, yep, got the machine, getting the machine, so the machine will be there on premises in the kitchen and making it right there, so.
Well, again, welcome to Wilmington. I wish you the best of luck, and you probably won't see any of us down there. We'll have sunglasses on, disguises. Good luck.
No worries. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Kira.
John, welcome.
Thank you.
You can't help but be passionate, huh? Half Greek, half Italian?
Yeah, I know. What a combo.
I know your folks, by the way. I see your dads in the back, Frank, and your mom. She's not here, but I'm looking forward to it. I love ice cream, as you can see. So, and I think specialty flavors, right?
Oh, yeah.
And different types. You want to throw out a few of those?
Yeah, man, so I'm going to have, like I said, about twenty to twenty-five flavors, probably about like three or five of them at a time are going to be dairy-free, because I want to, you know, target that audience as well, because a lot of people have dairy allergies, so I want to make sure they're able to enjoy their product as well. But a bunch of different flavors that like other parlors or stands don't, you know, even offer, you know, practically even heard of. So I'm going to be rotating a bunch of different flavors per week, so every week, there's something a little bit different that you can look forward to. But, I mean, you got your usual chocolate, vanilla, and strawberry that you kind of like always have to have on the menu, because those are the most popular. But then you can also have, you know, strawberry cheesecake, gooey gooey butter cake, tiramisu, I mean, cannoli, and banoffee pie, which people in America really don't know, but it's a really good dolce de leche flavored base that nobody else offers, just, just a bunch of flavors, like over seventy that I've made so far, and a lot of them, people I haven't really even heard of or thought of, but are like delicious and unique, so.
We can bring in our own sampling spoons.
Yes. Free samples, please. I encourage it. So you never know which one's going to be a favorite, so that's the way to do it. So one of the things Ash Young is going to be offering is what they call flights, which is kind of like eight to like ten different flavors, you know, sample size that you can order. That way, you can try a bunch of flavors at once and pick out a new favorite, you know, perhaps in the future, so.
Offer flights so we can float out of there. Welcome. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, and Uncle John, we're pleased that you're here, and it sounds delicious, and literally. So I noticed you brought a pen. There's only one thing left to do before we take the vote. We are going to go down the line and give you our favorite flavor, please. Kevin will start over here. Kevin, quickly, we need everyone's quick favorite flavor.
Oh, my God, too much pressure. Come on. Any one of them. I'm not fussy.
Gary, you have a favorite?
Chocolate.
Chocolate. I'm a mint chocolate chip. Eric?
Oh, cookie dough.
Cookie dough.
Mint chocolate chip.
Pistachio.
Ooh, pistachio. So I've made those already. So mint chocolate chip. So do you like, so I actually make a mint chocolate chip, but I also, instead of the chips, I actually put in crushed-up Oreos.
Oreos. I know, I knew you were going to say that.
That is delicious.
Change my vote.
You're really trying to get this vote.
You're like saying at the same time.
Yeah. Who was the cookie dough?
That was me. Take it all.
So the base, so cookie dough actually make a little bit different in a better way. So many shops, one of the things I take pride in is cookie dough usually is just vanilla ice cream base with cookie dough pieces. What I actually do is make the base itself cookie dough flavored with the cookie dough in it. Makes it ten times better. And the pistachio is amazing, like...
I brought some with you, right?
Yeah, I was about to say.
It's on my house. We'll bring something next time.
If you don't come with samples, I don't know.
I see a lot of drooling.
Chocolate chip? A chocolate chip if you're doing cookie dough?
Oh, yeah, yeah, chocolate chip. Chocolate chips in there as well, so, yep.
John, I'm not a...
A chocolate chip cookie breakup.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I just invented it.
Whatever you want.
You have a new job.
You just retired. Part-time job.
I just retired.
I do need a taster, so if you're willing to.
Come on, come on.
Oh, yeah, there's a tough one.
You guys are out.
We're both retirees, so we can be tasting for you all the time.
Sounds good.
This is, John, I'm not a betting man, but if this vote doesn't go the way I think it is, kind of, then I'm way off. So with that, we'll call for, if anybody would like to offer a motion to grant the request?
To accept.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. John, thank you so much for being here, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for choosing Wilmington.
Thank you.
Good night. Feel bad whoever's up next.
I know, that's a tough one. That's a tough act to follow.
I don't know who put this agenda together, but man, let me tell you. All right.
Hard one to follow.
It is, but if anybody can do it, it's our next guest. She's here, our Planning and Conservation Director, Valerie Gingrich is here. Good evening, accompanied by Jane. Thank you for being here regarding a presentation of zoning articles on the annual town meeting warrant and special town meeting warrant, and she's come prepared as always. Valerie, it's nice to see you again. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks for being here. I would imagine there'll be quite a few questions, and look forward to your presentation. I know it's a busy time of year, and most folks are ramping up and starting to think about town meeting, and they've heard something about town meeting, and I know there's a lot of interest, a lot of questions surrounding this, so I really appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Happy to be here, and I have a really brief summary of each article that the Planning Board put together for this year, so I'll go through each one of those and leave some time for questions.
Thank you.
So starting off, this is a list of the articles that the Planning Board is putting forward. Annual Town Meeting, there's a Flood Plane, District Update, Accessory Dwelling Unit Update, a Short-Term Rental Prohibition, and then the two special town meeting articles for the MBTA Communities. So starting with Flood Plane, so we have to have a flood plane bylaw to be compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program, and that allows residents to apply to that program to get flood insurance. So we do these periodic updates for new maps, or if there's new requirements, technical requirements, or new definitions, so, and I think that's Article twenty-seven in your, in your draft there. So this update, there were a lot of texts, there was a lot of text that we needed to redo. So there were new maps, outdated language, definitions, technical requirements, so we ended up doing a bit of a rewrite, and while we were doing that, we took the opportunity to streamline the process. So right now, if you're doing work in Flood Plane, you have to go to two different bodies. You have to go to the Conservation Commission and have them review your project, make sure it meets the Wetland Protection Act, and that includes a public hearing and notice to abutters. So you go through that process. It's a very technical review, but then you also have to go to the Board of Appeals for the zoning piece to get a special permit, which includes a public hearing, notice to abutters. So you're basically doing that process twice. So we took this opportunity to do what a bunch of other towns are doing, and that's shifting the special permit requirement to an administrative permit through the Building Department. So this rewrite includes that permit through the Building Department. There's review still by the Health Department, Conservation, Engineering, all the folks who typically review those types of projects. So you would no longer have to go to two public hearings and two public notices and two processes. You'd just go to Conservation for the public process and then the administrative permit through the Building Department.
Valerie, can I ask a question on that? For the, did you talk to the Board of Appeals about this? Did they have any comment on this change?
We did not, but I do know that they heavily rely on the review that goes through the Conservation Commission. So that review happens first, and once they kind of receive their thumbs up from the commission, which Engineering is reviewing thoroughly, then the process through the Board of Appeals is kind of a formality almost. So it's really not a typical permit that the Board of Appeals sees. So I don't think that they are going to be opposed to not seeing those. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then moving to accessory dwelling units, the second article, which is, I think it's number twenty-six. So in 2024, the Affordable Homes Act included a provision to have accessory dwelling units, ADUs, up to nine hundred square feet as of right, and this was a requirement for all towns in the state. And a quick kind of, you know, a quick definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is, it's a self-contained housing unit that's accessory to the principal dwelling unit. We've had an ADU bylaw for decades. We've had it for a really long time, and that bylaw allows attached owner-occupied accessory dwelling units up to twelve hundred fifty square feet as of right. So you don't have to get a special permit for that. You could do it, and we've had that in place for quite some time. But this act had specific requirements that we need to update our bylaw to include. So I did kind of a side-by-side comparison here. Our existing bylaw, we have a deed restriction requiring owner occupancy. We're not allowed to do that anymore. So the proposed bylaw doesn't have any sort of owner occupancy requirement to it. Our existing bylaw is up to twelve hundred fifty square feet, two bedrooms, and the new requirement is that it goes up to nine hundred square feet or half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. So it's actually going to be a smaller allowance than we do already. And then currently, we have a requirement that it be an attached accessory dwelling unit, and it be designed to look like it's one single family. This new law has it as attached or detached, so it could be either one of those. And the parking really stays the same. We require one parking space. That's the same in the new requirement, except that there's no parking for the ADU required if you're within half a mile of a transit station. So these are the changes that we're shifting from our existing to our proposed language. And the planning board, when we talked about this, they did consider, well, right now we have a larger allowance, you know, should we keep that as an option, as a special permit? But then as we talked it through, they kind of came to the conclusion that if we kept the existing option, have a new option, you could theoretically end up with two ADUs on a lot with a single family, ending up with basically three units, if you do it in the right sequence. So they didn't think that that was the best idea. So the proposal is to change out our existing bylaw to make it reflect these new requirements. And, you know, I guess the ADU topic has gotten a bit of attention, I think more so in places that don't have ADUs currently. We've had the ADU allowance. It's actually doing an ADU on your property is not as easy as it may sound, because your septic system has to be sized so that it can take on a new bedroom or two, and you still have to meet building setbacks. So you have constraints, and the septic is actually kind of the biggest constraint, especially if you're in groundwater protection district, then you have to have ten thousand square feet per bedroom. So it's, this new requirement isn't going to equate to an influx of ADUs in town. We already allow them. It's difficult because you have to have the right components to actually make it work. We do see, we do see some every year, you know, a few, but definitely not a large number.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Valerie. And these, if I remember correctly, or maybe this is a while ago, they're not to be rented out, or they can be rented out?
So they, actually, that's a great segue. So they can be rented, but the statute is clear that we can prohibit them from being short-term rentals. So they're not allowed to be, we can have it so that it's not an Airbnb type of situation. But they could be rental units, just not those short-term rentals, which I'm going to touch on next.
Thank you.
Just a minute, a comment real quick. I think it's important to note that this, the changes that we're making are merely to have the local bylaw or funds what's already the law of the land. So these, it's already the right of individuals with these houses to do this. Our change is just to reflect the reality of the statute and not create that weird option where it's possible to have two of them on one lot. So we need to make the change to just provide clarity, but it doesn't prevent someone from coming in tomorrow and saying, I want to put a nine hundred square foot ADU on my lot as a matter of right and getting a building permit.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sully.
Evening, Valerie. Just a quick question. What's to prevent somebody from creating a duplex? In other words, I've got a single-family house, I want to put an ADU, and then maybe at some point down the future, I have a tenant decision, oh, why don't we convert this to a, like a two-unit condo, standalone condo, and, you know, have each person, you know, be responsible for their side, so to speak? And market it as their own, you know, as, you know, I own unit one and I can market it and sell it. You know, Fred owns unit two and can market and sell it.
Yeah, if I could just take a crack at that one. The zoning act doesn't regulate the type of ownership. It just regulates whether, kind of the number of units. So in theory, that's in theory legal under the ADUs, is that you could have them in condo ownership, or you could have them in ownership as rentals. That's not something we're allowed to regulate under zoning.
But somebody would, if somebody wanted to convert a single-family house with an ADU, they'd have to go for a zoning change to create a duplex, for lack of a better term. Am I correct in saying that?
Or a two-family home.
Yeah, like I said, zoning can't regulate the type of ownership. So whether it's a condo or a rental, the key is the accessory nature of the dwelling unit and the size, as long as it meets the criteria of, is it nine hundred square feet or less than half the size of the original unit?
And I agree with you on the septic, because most, I would say most houses that are built today on septic are probably pretty much maxed out in their bedroom space anyway. So if you wanted to do an ADU and do a, put a bedroom, excuse me, you know, make it a one-bedroom, and put a bathroom in, obviously, somehow would they have to deed restrict their house down? In other words, like if you, I know a house right now that has five rooms with closets, but it's deed restricted to a four-bedroom house because of the septic, the size of the septic. Would somebody have to, like, deed restrict it down a bedroom to put a bedroom in an ADU with the septic?
That is a great question for the Health Department. I'm not going to try to tackle that one, but those are the types of questions I think that are coming in little by little, and folks are finding that it's a lot harder than it seems. Because, right, you have to have the size, septic, for the bedrooms that you have, and you're right, they're typically, they're matching up right now, that you don't have an extra allowance for it. Right, extra capacity. Right.
We did this a few years ago. We built an in-law for my parents, so we did it seven years ago. So, and it was a process. I mean, it was, you know, we worked with everybody here at town, and it was fine, but it did take, you know, the time and, you know, work with the architect and the builders and all that stuff. And we did, you know, have to, you know, upgrade our septic, and we had to build it up, the whole thing, you know what I mean? But it was, it's great for us, because my parents are there, and it's, at that time, we had to have the door connecting us, you know, which we obviously do, and they have their own, they actually have two exits. But it's a one-bedroom, you know, and bath, but we, everything you said's true.
Just want to... Mr. DePaul. Just make perfectly clear, I'm hearing you correctly, there are no changes into our septic restrictions with this, other than that they have to abide by the zoning regulations of the town, correct?
Right, so they still have to abide by Title V. Right. And specific questions about septic, you know, I would defer to Shelley on those. Yeah. Yep. So certainly it's going to be a challenge for folks, but it is correct. They could come in, do this today, but we want our bylaw to match on the state requirement. So that's what you'll see in that article. Great. And then short-term rentals, the accessory dwelling unit legislation is really, really clear that, you know, you can prohibit these ADUs from being Airbnb-type of rentals. Our current zoning bylaw doesn't talk about short-term rentals at all, doesn't mention it as a use at all, and our bylaw states that if your use isn't specifically permitted, it's not allowed. So short-term rentals, because they're not talked about, are prohibited. But that's not super helpful if you're a homeowner looking through and you're thinking about doing an ADU, and you're thinking, oh, maybe I could rent this out sometimes as a short-term rental. So we wanted to put something in the bylaw that makes it really clear that short-term rentals are prohibited and also define what it is. So that article defines it and clearly prohibits it in all districts, as is currently the case. Just makes it clear.
Is there a particular reason why it's prohibited?
Please continue.
Okay. And then on the special town meeting warrant, the two articles that, and those are one and two, the articles that were discussed at the fall, December town meeting, coming back, and what has changed? So since December, the Milton case was decided by the SJC, January eighth, and they ruled that the MBTA community's law is constitutional, the AG's office can enforce it, and that they have to promulgate the regulations through the statutory process. So right now, there are emergency regulations in place, there's a new deadline for compliance, which is July fourteenth. We submitted an action plan on February thirteenth to stay in interim compliance. And really what's changed and what, the reason for this coming back for reconsideration is that now there's the added knowledge that it's not just that the town could lose grants and grant funding, but the AG's office can enforce the requirement. So those coming back for consideration with that new information is the special town meeting warrant. And that is my quick summary of the articles that the planning board is putting forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming here tonight and educating us on these and presenting. If you could, I think if we could just go back to that last slide, I would imagine there'll be some questions and commentary about this. Obviously, this has been a hot topic. It's no secret to you. I'm sure your office gets calls, and obviously, there's be a lot more dialogue about this, I think, leading up to town meeting as well. So thank you for clarifying. I appreciate these bullet points, because, you know, a lot has happened since our special town meeting, which, by the way, you know, for good, bad, or indifferent, each, myself and each one of my colleagues voted in opposition of this. We spoke clearly, leading up to the vote, that we opposed this, and I think, without belaboring it, I think each person brought up really good points of why we opposed it. But since that time, a lot has happened, and therefore, we have been put in a position where as we as a town want to make sure we can keep our options open and keep all possibilities on the table, we find ourselves in this position, as you just described, have to place it into a special town meeting at the upcoming May third meeting. That's not to say, as I've heard from some, and I'm sure you have heard, that we have, we didn't like the outcome of the vote. That's certainly not the case here. I want to make sure we're clear about that. And although a member up here may decide to change their vote, I don't want to speak for anyone, that is simply not the case. And so I just wanted to make sure I said that, because a lot has changed. I think feels like almost every week you pick up the paper and there's a new, there's a new set of information that's come out about a different community, a path that they've tried to take, and, you know, I know some of our neighbors have taken action. We haven't ruled anything out. I want to be, correct me if I'm wrong, we have not ruled anything out, and quite frankly, there are still options for us on the table to discuss and decide as a group, if we decide we want to explore another option. To be quite frank, an exemption has been run by our legal counsel, and so we will be perhaps hearing more about that in the coming weeks, but we haven't ruled anything out. I think it's important for us to communicate that to residents, that we're keeping our options open here, that residents, like they were back in the fall, are encouraged to attend and let their voice be heard, but this is no, by no means a way of us trying to undermine the vote that was taken this past fall. Did I miss something there?
No, I think that's, you made it very clear.
Yeah. So with that, perhaps others have questions or comments?
Yeah, please. Thanks, Valerie. I'm still opposed, but, and I'm going to ask you something that I know you really can't answer, but just to kind of get the conversation going. So what if we don't bring this to town meeting? And we're still, I understand we're in compliance to July fourteenth, which means that we have to bring it to another vote before that time? So whether we don't bring it, or let's just say we bring it and it gets shut down again, then obviously we're kind of in the same situation. And then my second thing is, I feel like, you know, like we were saying, it keeps changing, everything keeps coming out, but the same thing I keep hearing is if, you know, people that, the towns that don't comply, they're just going to do it anyway. So let's pretend we don't comply, and they come in, they can just pick anything? I'm just, I just kind of want to hear like a worst-case scenario, like what are your thoughts? And I won't hold you to this, because I know it's a guessing game, but let's just say we don't comply. What can, you know, the state come in and say, okay, well, we're going to put this over and, you know, next to Market Basket, whatever, you know? Is that basically what you're dissent you're getting?
I think she's just appointed you Attorney General, if you want to respond.
I would love that, but...
So if I could just take a quick crack at it, and this is after discussion with town council, in all likelihood, what would happen would be a suit from the Attorney General's office against the community or communities that are non-compliant as of July fourteenth. The outcome of that suit, based on the SJC case, is relatively straightforward, which is the town, the communities would be found to be in violation of the statute. Because the SJC ruled that losing grants is not the only remedy, the AG can actually get a court order to do it, what would happen would likely be, in the first instance, we would get ordered by the court to comply. That would, you know, in my, you know, my experience, that would be something along the lines of, the town of Wilmington has sixty days within which to demonstrate to the AG's office that they are compliant, which would mean we'd have to have another town meeting, have to put it on the ballot again. And then if we could not demonstrate compliance within that sixty days, we would be in violation of a court order, which the AG would likely say, the town has demonstrated that it's not willing to become compliant, therefore, we request the court allow the AG's office to write the zoning for the town to make it compliant. They could either do that, you know, in very broad strokes, which is to say, now in Wilmington, every lot within half a mile of every train station is now allowed to have a multifamily as a matter of right. They could do something like appoint a special master, which is where they would have a person assigned to evaluate the zoning and, like a consultant that we might hire to change our zoning. They would appoint someone who would go in and do something in a more detailed, they may take our last compliant zoning and say, this is what you get. It's not clear what exactly that last step would be, but it would be the AG's office making the determination about what our zoning would be as opposed to the town.
So essentially, if we say no, they're going to say yes. So we're being forced to do this regardless. So I don't even understand why we're, you know, I'm not speaking to anyone in this room about this, I'm just, but, and that's exactly what I, what you said is exactly the way I'm understanding things too, is that we can fight this to the bitter end and we're going to lose, is essentially what's happening here.
Yeah, I mean, the SJC basically ruled that a town can't just sit back and take the loss of grants. That's not sufficient. They have to comply with the law.
Right, which, yeah.
And so that's...
I'm still opposed. I will fight it to the end personally, if I have my choice, because if we're going to lose anyway, may as well, you know, it's just frustrating that they're holding this, you know, it just makes no sense. I mean, why not just force us to do it and be done with it, instead of going through all these hoops and spending money and all this stuff? Again, I'm just rambling, but...
They could have done it the way they did ADUs, which is just change the law, and then it just is. They decided not to do it that way.
We're not going to like it, no matter what, so just shove it down our throats instead of playing these games, you know?
I would say, just, I just want to kind of put it out there, you know, running town meetings is not super expensive, but it's also not free.
Oh, no, I know.
So we'd have to, you know, every time we have to do one, it's...
And this is why I, kind of my, the point I was getting to was, what's the point of even having a town meeting about it? Let's just, if we're going to stay, right now, our residents said no. I think we just leave it alone and see what happens, because if we go back and we say no again, it's going to be the results. I mean, the only thing changed here, really, is if we agree to do this at town meeting, there's a chance that it could get overturned to say yes, and then we're compliant. But, so if we give it one more chance, and, you know, the residents seem to change their mind, and then they say, yes, let's do it, but if it's another no, in my opinion, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't be in favor for another town meeting for this subject again, because it's fruitless.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Sully.
Yeah, no, no, I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you for hearing my rant. It's just frustrating, you know?
The thing that concerns me is that if we stay non-compliant, and the Attorney General's office goes marching into court and says they are not compliant, the court says, fine, you go do what you have to do, and then they come in with their big magic marker on a map of Wilmington and say, this, this, and this is now going to be your zoning, whether you like it or not. That's the fear I have right now, is that they will force something on us that will even be worse than the plans... even be worse than the plans that we have, uh, been presented with. And, uh, I don't, I don't like it, it being jammed down our throats like it is. I tell you that before, I feel like we're being bullied. It doesn't matter anymore. Now, what we have to do is, we have to seriously look at what's going to be the best for the town, and if it's the best of the town to say, we're not going to support it, then so be it, but we have to be prepared for what the outcome of that could be. And very simply, they can just take, again, take their magic marker and circle around and say, now this is where you're going to get, whether you like it or not, and walk out of town and go, we got our way, ha-ha, and, uh, we have to move forward with that. That's my concern, is that they'll just dump it on us wherever they want to put it.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order.
I'm sorry, I thought you were stretching your legs. No.
No, it's point of order.
Mrs. Gingrich, sir, excuse me, sir. Sir, this is not a public hearing. This is not...
There's an unfunded mandate legality out there. You're looking to...
Thank you, sir. This is not a public comment.
...on closing the warrant.
Sir.
You're talking about the cost of a special town meeting...
We will need to take a recess if you don't take your seat, please.
Listen, you can put this on the fall ballot vote with the school.
Sir, I'm kindly asking you...
And wait for the unfunded mandate legalities to take...
If you'd like to make a comment, we do have public comments...
It's a point of order.
Later on, thank you. Duly noted. Mr. West.
Thank you. And thank you, Valerie. Again, I, I go with Lil, I'm going to vote no at town meeting. Sorry. But, you know, again, not, not on you, not on you, but on the process, on, on this here. I understand, as an example, what Mr. DePalma said about if we, if we vote no, they could, they could jam it down our throats. They could jam it throughout, throughout, down our throats anyway, because if we're looking at twelve hundred and forty-eight units that we're trying to comply with, if you will, and as you stated, the reality is, even though theoretically, somebody could build those twelve forty-eight in the plans that you proposed, if the reality is, is that realistically, three or four hundred units can get built on that property, at some point, the state's going to say, where's your other eight hundred units? I want to see buildings. I don't want to see, I, I know you, I know you got Metro over here that you could put a, you know, they could knock it down and rebuild and stuff like that. I, I don't see, I don't see the state stopping if we say yes. As far as being an affordable project, you know, with the affordability, it's not an affordability project, guys, and gals, it's, ladies, it's a housing issue with the state.
Right. It's not affordable.
You know, as you stated at the town meeting last year, Valerie, when you talked about Cross Street, you said that the, the affordable units, and again, I'm not throwing it at you, but just presenting some information, that on Cross Street, you said that the one bedrooms were going for fourteen forty-two a month for a one-bedroom, and twenty-nine thirty-one for a two-bedroom. Now, obviously, those prices are going to go up over time, so, and even it was stated that in order to afford these, you know, that you, you have a maximum, maximum, uh, amount that you can make to be able to qualify for the affordable units, and in order to do, in order to actually pay for these units, you've actually got to be right there. You can't say, well, gee, I, I make here, I know the guideline's up here. You've got to basically make the guideline. Even like the Lowell Street condos, they're averaging five seventy-five or so for, you know, to buy the, the new condos there, plus, you know, so you're paying, you're basically paying that plus a condo fee. So, I, I don't see this being any affordable benefit to help our, you know, the, the quote kids in our town, or, you know, helping people stay in the town. I, I don't, I don't see that. The, the other thing that I'd like to bring up, and I'll bring it up under new businesses, is that I would like to talk about us exploring an exemption, you know, whether we actually file an exemption, or at least look at the other towns that have filed an exemption, because the thing is, is that we're either a yes or a no. Town meeting told us no, so I think we need to abide by town meeting, just like, you know, people voted for a, a town hall, as an example, seven votes, uh, swayed the building of a town hall school administration building. And we said, you know what? The majority, whether, whether the voters like it or not, we're building a town hall school administration building. So, I honestly think that, what's that?
I said, I agree.
You know, so I honestly think that, you know, that we do need to side with the voters here and, and talk about that. And, you know, the last thing I'll bring up is, you know, one of the other things that we're looking at is a, uh, water regulations, appeal, update, and revised outdoor water use restrictions. So, I mean, you know, it's getting to the point that we're not having enough water, theoretically, or we're having these restrictions so that we can't, and again, I'm not saying wastewater, but, you know, they're, they're saying that even when you're brushing your teeth, shut the water off, or, you know, and, and, you know, restrictions on outside water use as far as washing your cars and mowing your lawn, watering your lawns and gardening and stuff like that. So, if we don't have, you know, if the existing residents are losing these rights, how are we bringing in new residents and the, and the water restrictions that, that are going on with that? It's just, the whole thing, I, I know I'm kind of blathering a little bit, and I apologize, but the whole thing kind of, I, I think is lousy. I mean, there, you know, I, I know Boston, for example, is, and Boston's exempt from this, but yet, they're saying that there's a, I think Mayor Wu was saying that by 2030, she's looking to build seventy thousand affordable units in Boston, but that's not in this count. And I think Boston has the MBTA all, smack all over it. So, I mean, it just, it's, I, I see no benefit in having this, and, and like I said, I'd, I'd like to explore, you know, we'll talk about it later in the meeting, but I'd like to talk about, you know, exploring exemptions, or at least seeing what other towns are doing, and maybe we can go in their footsteps, because I think we owe that to the no vote, which was the majority vote at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. West. Yeah, thank you, just give me one second, please. I think you made some great points, and I just wanted to address the, uh, the idea of us potentially voting for an exemption, something that the manager and I did discuss leading up to the agenda, uh, being posted on Thursday. You know, our deadline is Thursday afternoon for the agendas, and we did discuss putting it on this agenda, but we decided not to, uh, because we hadn't heard back from legal counsel yet on it, and we wanted to make sure we presented each member with all the information possible before we took a vote. Now, we did that feeling comfortable, knowing that it's very possible that we could take such a vote at the end of this month, which is, I believe, March twenty...
Twenty-fourth.
Thank you, March twenty-fourth. And so, by then, we would have, um, a legal opinion, we would have all the information presented to the members in a timely manner, so we could take a, a good vote. So, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear.
And the other thing that I'd add to that, Mr. Chair, is that there are other towns, Tuxbury, I guess, is talking about it tomorrow, I think Drake, it's going to be talking about it on the eleventh. There's other towns, Rentham, Middleton, Marshfield, Duxbury, Hanson, I guess, is another town. So, it'd be good to see if we can get some of the information in advance, so that we know what they're doing, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
And I, I think, I totally agree. I think that's a great point, and we will have the benefit of that on March twenty-fourth, as if we had taken the vote tonight. You know, again, we went back and forth about that, whether we should or not, we were still, you know, it was brand-new information, going back to last Thursday morning, Tuesday afternoon. Valerie, is there something you wanted to add there? I know there's obviously been a lot of chatter about an exemption, should we file for an exemption? I think if I had to guess, it will be a vote that this board takes, um, at our next meeting, but, uh, I would imagine you've, you know, there, I know Tuxbury was mentioned, there's been a few other towns that have filed for an exemption, uh, from this, uh, you know, you've got a somewhat of an indication back from council that I know you'll be putting in, uh, writing to the board, so that we can kind of get some more clarity how KP Law feels about that. They have a couple of other clients who are going through the same thing, so they're formulating ideas. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it's, it's, um, still early in the process that, that, you know, it feels like, feels like for us, it's been a while, because it was before our last meeting that the, the auditor came out with this determination, but for purposes of how the state government moves, that's two weeks, and that's not, that's not, they don't move that fast. So, um, my initial response, and I think you folks will remember, was, I think it's important for us to make a determination as to whether or not this actually has any merit. I, I, at some point in time between then and now, I, I was operating under the assumption that there might be some, some merit to it, and that we should have a serious conversation about filing that exemption. I still think we probably should have a conversation about filing that exemption, but the information that I think I, uh, we, we've gotten from, from KP since then is, the legislature can just take a, a vote to eliminate that loophole, and if they do, it's just gone. Like, if they take a vote to say that Chapter Three A does not implicate the unfunded mandate statute, then it just doesn't implicate the unfunded mandate statute, and that exemption goes away. The fact is, the matter is, they haven't taken that vote yet, so, you know, if, if they haven't taken that vote by the twenty-fourth, I think it's imperative on the town that we, as the, as the chair was saying, to keep all of our options open, we file for that exemption. I also think we maintain it on a special meeting, because if that exemption goes away between now and May, our options are, and I, you know, I, I, I do think it's important to note that the options aren't necessarily do, do what I think the planning board and the, and the staff have put together is a, is a, a very low-impact statute, or change. The options are not necessarily do that now or do that later. The options may be, we do that now, or the state comes in and does something later that's much more draconian, and that's my concern, because, because I don't know whether they'll allow us to undo it. I don't know if, you know, I, and, and so, I, you know, Lexington, for instance, and it was published right shortly before our, our meeting in December, put together zoning that literally created thousands of new housing starts in the time since they did it. You know, if the, my concern is, if that's the model that the AG's office says, that's what we're going to look for, is we're going to try to put in Wilmington what Lexington did, I think that would be something that nobody at this table would, would be looking forward to, and so that's my concern, is that it's not, it's not a necessarily, if the exemption goes away, a vote no, and then the AG will just put in what we, what we've been talking about, which may be a couple hundred, three hundred houses. It may be vote no, and the AG says, okay, how do we actually create twelve hundred units of new housing? And so, I want to, that's my concern, and that's why I think it's imperative that we keep it on the, on the special town meeting, so we have all of our options open as, as we move towards May, and anything we know, there are, there are, I think, six communities right now that have not filed their, um, their action plan, and so they are non-compliant now. I don't know if the AG's office may do something between now and May to those entity, those municipalities that are non-compliant. That might give us some more information. I think just keeping our options open as we go forward is the best policy.
Point of order, Mr. Bendel.
No, thank, excuse me, sir, we're going to go in order, and Mr. De, we're going to go in order, sir. Mr. DePalma was patiently waiting.
Taking a vote...
Sir, please.
Annual meeting warrant.
Mr. DePalma was waiting. Thank you, sir.
My concerns, my concerns, as I voiced, were, uh, I still feel strongly about, but I, I've never heard anything in this that was affordable. Never. And maybe I'm wrong, uh, but I've never heard anything that says, well, we can develop this as affordable housing, uh, and, uh, present it to the town that way. I, am I wrong that, I mean, these are not going to be affordable housing?
So, I can, I can answer that.
Thank you.
So, we have two articles that, um, that would, that are proposed on the special town meeting warrant. The first one is to create the district. The second one is a requirement that fifteen percent of the units in that district be affordable.
Wouldn't that, excuse me one second, wouldn't that automatically go into effect? Because that's basically the town's, uh, uh, the way the town handles all the, all the developments that we have, is that fifteen percent will go into low income, or?
Inclusion, I think you're talking about the inclusionary bylaw.
Yeah, inclusionary bylaw, yes.
The inclusionary bylaw, um, lists the districts that it applies to, so we would really be adding that new district, if we create it, to the inclusionary bylaw, so that the fifteen percent affordable gets built in the new district. So, we'd have to do both of those articles, create the district, and then require the fifteen percent affordable in that new district with the second article.
Thank you.
Mr. West...
I just had a, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question.
Frankly, then we'll go to Kevin after.
The two articles, Article One and Article Two, is Article One a fifty-plus-one, uh, vote, and Article Two a two-thirds majority?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
Yeah. Basically, all of the board members took all my comments and questions from Valerie. You know, all I have to say is, what's affordable to one person isn't affordable to another. This is, this is not an affordable, uh, option, I don't think. We certainly do have to look at filing an exemption. You answered my questions on the enforcement of the AGs. I don't know if part of the exemption can include that, um, it would go back to, uh, our planning, uh, component, so that the AG's office just doesn't come in with a magic marker and circle areas. We force them to comply with what has been, uh, drafted by the planning board, um, in, in that exemption filing. But I just, I, I, I just have a, an issue with this forced-fed approach. Take it or leave it, and if you don't take it, we're going to give it to you. So, I, I, I agree with my colleagues.
Thank you, and, and I think what is important is, is just to, to wrap up my comments, is kind of what I said at the beginning, that we're keeping all of our options open here, and I know we're kind of walking a, a tight rope here, because I'm mindful of residents who favor this, and we represent them as well. You know, and the five of us, uh, voted in opposition, but there are residents who represent, who, who favor this, and there are others who I'm sure who say, listen, I voted against it, but the rules have changed, so I now would like to, you know, see this pass. I'm sure that it runs the gamut of where people are feeling on this. So, we represent all those folks, and I think what we're doing is a measured approach that keeps the options open. We're, you know, we're getting new information every day, feels like, uh, and we're going to be getting the best guidance possible from our legal counsel, so that we can make decisions when we need to. And I think the next decision we'll need to make will probably be at our next meeting, when we explore an exemption. I think, as Mr. West mentioned, we'll have the benefit of finding out what happens in some other communities. Who knows? There could be a whole new ruling from folks, uh, from now until then, in two weeks' time. But I think what's important is that residents should know that we have not made any final decisions here, and that we're going to leave it up to the residents at the special town meeting, and, uh, we are going to continue to explore all options. Now, something may come up later this month that we decide we may need to discuss and explore in April, and I would imagine we'll do that, too. But I appreciate you being here tonight. It won't be the last time we have this conversation. I would imagine, you know, next Tuesday, in fact, a week from tomorrow, we'll hear more from you at the joint meeting, which will be, you know, live on television and, uh, and right here at town hall, where I would imagine there'll be quite a bit of the same, similar discussion. I, I also want to, uh, point out the fact that, um, in addition to our remaining meetings before town meeting, that our warrants are going to be published online, uh, that the warrant book, once approved, will be mailed home in mid-April, so every resident will have an opportunity to read through exactly what they're being asked of. And I would imagine that will include the special town meeting, that there will be information...
I believe we've talked about including the special town meeting, yes.
That'll be in that, that pamphlet, that booklet as well. So, we're going to do the best we can to put all the information out there for residents, so they can make the decision they think is best. I know my colleagues to my left and right will do the same, and I think that this is obviously the, the big issue heading into town meeting, I think it's safe to say, for us and for a lot of communities, and I'm grateful that we have you and Jane in your office to help explain it to us, and I look forward to, uh, hearing from you again on Tuesday night and beyond, I'm sure, uh, as we move forward in this process. With that, is there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay.
How do you put two options open if you're looking to close the town meeting warrant on number six, what to consider?
Valerie, I really appreciate you being here, Jane. Thank you. Anything else in closing?
No, no. Well, one thing, for anyone, for any of the residents who have questions about this, we're happy to talk. You can stop by, you can call, you can email.
Great. Yeah, I appreciate you doing that. I would imagine you're getting quite a couple of calls of late, and I appreciate you. You do a great job, and I encourage people to continue to do so, because it's really invaluable, uh, the, the information that you have, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Jane.
All right. With that, we will move to our next two appointments, which are back-to-back, very similar, our board discussion and review of the proposed annual town meeting warrant. The town manager's going to provide us with some very important information. And then we will move to the open and review of the proposed special town meeting, which will also take place on Saturday, May 3. And then later on in the agenda, we will have a board to consider item to close and sign the warrant for the special town meeting and the annual town meeting. Mr. Slagle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second read of the article.
The second reading, can I waive the second reading, Mr. Chair? No, okay.
Unfortunately not, this is an important one.
Yes, so, my goal here is not to read the text of the articles, but to basically describe them, and if there's money attached to them, to provide the numbers that are attached. So, Article One is, as generally is on there, about responding to the ballot, the annual election.
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars, yes. Article Two, to hear the reports of committees enact their own. Thus far, I don't have any committee reports, so hopefully we'll be able to pass over that one. Article Three, to see if the town is about bad bills or unpaid bills from prior years. We didn't pay one in December, I don't, I haven't been told of any one, so that should be a zero-dollar one. Article Four is just to authorize the treasurer collector to enter agreements with banks. Article Five is the budget, as folks are aware of, so that is the budget we've been discussing in front of the finance committee.
Dollar amount?
I don't have the exact dollar amount written down.
That's okay.
It's kind of in flux at this point, because of some requests that were at the...
Sir, I'm going to kindly ask you to refrain from just shouting out, please. We need to maintain order.
He said he was going to name the dollar amount.
Articles, Article Six is the capital plan. So, we're doing the capital plan a little bit different than this year that has been done in the past, so in an effort to have a little transparency. You see, the capital plan is all listed on one page, it's all listed with amounts, the source of the funding is also listed there. The total amount of the capital plan is $11,47,555. But it's broken down by each individual, by department, and the specifics, project title. Article Seven is peg access, that's about $500,000 that we get from Comcast and Verizon to go towards local access television, which is WCTV, or here this evening. Article Eight is the Fourth of July, that's $50,000. Every year, the town has authorized for $50,000 to go to the Fourth of July Committee for the Fourth of July festivities. Article Nine is Memorial Day and Veterans Day, that's appropriation of $13,000. Article Ten, the funds are actually in there, it's a total of $1,500 in Article Ten, which is in the text of it. Article Eleven is re-initiating two revolving accounts, as you can see, the funding amounts are there, 4,500 for the compost bin revolving fund, and 200,000 for the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund. Article Twelve is the establishing of a revolving fund for fees for the use of the high school field, so we can pay overtime, contractually required overtime to the public works and DPW staff that are required to staff those. The sewer division, that's Article Thirteen, that's $3,747,35. Article Fourteen is, yes, the OPEB trust, that's a million dollars. Article Fifteen is funding that we're transferring to the capital stabilization fund, so that's $3 million. Article Sixteen, now, this is a change from the draft, so I just wanted to explain to everyone. In the draft, we had, in this location, the creation of a pension stabilization fund, and then transferring of funds into it. As I'd mentioned, the goal was to give us control over those retirement funds, instead of sending them directly to Middlesex, we can decide to help hold on to it and try to pay it off early. It turns out, we already have a retirement stabilization fund, it was just named a retirement stabilization fund with funds in it. So, rather than create a new one, we're just putting $1.5 million into the retirement stabilization fund. There's already approximately $3.7 million in that fund right now. So that gives us a good start towards, what I'm hoping is, the ability for us in the mid-2030s to pay off our pension liability early, which would allow, as we've talked about the plan, the possibility of bringing on debt for another school without raising, having any debt exclusion. Article Seventeen is inter-municipal transfers for various line items. We don't have any of those right now, and probably won't have any of those till much closer to the date, but right now, I don't have any of those anticipated. Article Eighteen, this is the water department, to replace the water main on Route 38 from Route 62 to Eames Street. It's $5.5 million in debt that would be taken on by the water department, as opposed to by the town, from the general fund. Article Nineteen is the industrialway sewer pump station by the sewer department, that's 1.2 million. Article Twenty is an article that's dependent on a vote from the Board of Water Sewer Commissioners that we're looking forward to on the 12th, to transfer a piece of property. Article Twenty-One is, in case, when we get there, that's for Shrappe Farms. So there's an appraisal out there with Mark Rianserna, who did the original appraisal. We anticipate that back on April 2nd. So at that point in time, obviously, we'll discuss with the board the amount that the appraisal comes back at, and what the board's wishes to do with Article Twenty-One.
And if I could just interject, excuse me, the hope is there that that number perhaps would be available prior to the warrant going out to the public? If not, it would be online, we'd communicate, we'd have opportunity to communicate that.
Certainly, yeah. And the warrant article's never going to have the amount, so even when we send it out to the folks, we're not going to have that amount. That usually comes in the vote, but, yes, but we should have it and be able to discuss it, with the board at least, and then what we do with that will be the board's wish. The next two articles, Article Twenty-Two and Article Twenty-Three, are to acquire, potentially acquire an easement for the proposed North Wilmington Fire Substation, and to acquire an abandoned rail right-of-way in relation to the North Wilmington Fire Substation. The amounts for those will not be known until we do negotiations. My anticipation would be, the easement would be free. The transfer of the rail right-of-way, we are putting out for an RFP this week for an appraisal, to get an appraisal of that right-of-way. I wouldn't anticipate that to be a large sum of money, the right-of-way's in the wetlands and very next to conservation land, so it's not really buildable. So I anticipate that as being, hopefully being a sum that we could, would be palatable to purchase that right-of-way. The next article are for the acceptance of the roadways, there's no funding attached to the roadway acceptances. The board may remember, we took that up last meeting. Article Twenty-Five, this is one that, again, by way of explanation, in the original draft of the warrant, Article Twenty-Five was for the removal of random draw. After talking it over with members of the board and with the moderator, rather than eliminate random draw, what this would do, would change the language to allow the moderator greater control over articles he thinks are reasonably related. So the order of those articles to come up would be random, but, for instance, in the case of our December vote, when we had all of the MBTA zoning issues came up, the first one that was drawn, the moderator could make the determination, all three of these articles were really related, we're going to take them in the order then, instead of having to take them all out of order.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's a series of articles that are taken up numerically before random draw, like we do with the budget.
Correct.
So this wouldn't be every article coming out of random, it's only like half the, like the second half.
Yeah, the second half of the meeting is generally where random draw happens, it's the bylaw changes, it's the zoning changes, it's the petitioned articles, those are the ones that are subject to random draw. And now, if there are two that are related, this change to the random draw would allow the moderator to say, you've drawn up number two of these two related articles, we're going to take them, Article Number One and Article Number Two that were related. I think that's for, quite frankly, it's for ease of the town meeting, for understanding, it's much more transparent, I think, having things in the order in which they make logical sense, and, but it still allows for random draw, so that the concerns I think the members of the board were expressing about people stacking the, stacking the...
What other quick comment is that, I'm assuming that there's still going to be a grouping of some articles, like some of these smaller articles could be, like the American Legion, the parade?
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda, thank you.
Yeah, so that's generally something that the moderator speaks to the chair about prior to the meeting, to make sure the chair is comfortable with the consent agenda. And yes, so those will all be taken up as part of that consent agenda as well.
And through the chair, and we get that before town meeting, so we're aware of what's on the consent agenda.
Yes, yeah, so I think, and I think, so, I think the, last year, the things that were on the consent agenda were the reports, the compensating balance agreements, the peg access, the fun on the Fourth, Memorial and Veterans Day, the lease of space to the DFW American Legion and the compost bin revolving fund and the subsurface revolving fund, where the what was on the consent agenda last year. So I imagine that Jonathan will be choosing a similar grouping of things for the consent agenda.
Traditionally, before town meeting, we'll have our assignments given to who's going to be reading what article we choose to do.
I figured we'd just do the by random draw that night. Yes, the motions, the motions would be assigned today.
I know.
The motions, yeah, absolutely, we'll make sure that everybody gets the copies of the motions, and they'll be run by town council to make sure that they're in the appropriate format and have all the updated numbers.
Twenty-six?
Yes, Article Number Twenty-Six. Now we get into some of the zoning articles that we already talked about. Twenty-six is the ADU article, twenty-seven is the floodplain overlay district. I want to repeat something that Valerie mentioned, but I think it's really critical. This floodplain overlay district article is mandatory if people want to get flood insurance. We have to have this article passed. If this article is not passed, individuals who are, who are, will not be eligible to purchase flood insurance. So it's really critical for folks who are in those flood areas, that we pass that article as it's been drafted. All right, Article...
Page eleven.
Yeah, there we go. Twenty-eight, so this is the transfer of the assessors map parcels that are listed below into the care and custody of the Wilderness and Conservation Commission. These are, both of these parcels off Noah Street are comprised entirely of wetlands and non-buildable, so...
What street?
Noah Street. Article Twenty-Nine is the short-term rental article that we already discussed, so that would be the one that prohibits short-term rentals for anything in the ADUs. Article Thirty is an article put forward by the Commission on Disabilities to name a conference room in Wilmington Hall, and then, in the name of Dr. Phyllis D. Janetti, who served for over 30 years on the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities. Article Thirty-One is an article that was put forward by the Historic Commission regarding a demolition delay. That was, this also was reviewed by town council prior to its submission. And then the last two articles, Article Thirty-Two and Thirty-Three are petitioned articles. The first is the article to ban, to put term limits on all elective officers, elective officers should show no more than two consecutive terms. And then Article Thirty-Three is an amendment to a zoning bylaw to rezone something from R-20 to general business. So that is your annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Slagle, and just as a reminder, that's our second read now for folks. There will be a third read of this, obviously, next Tuesday at the joint meeting, where each article will begin to be discussed. So do you want to talk to us quickly about, let the audience know, before we hear about Article One and Two, which we heard a little bit about from Valerie, how that process will go? You know, you've talked to the moderator, and I have no doubt that the moderator can handle this, but just so everyone knows what to expect with the special town meeting, we have in recent history had a special town meeting within a town meeting. Could you describe that a little bit for folks at home?
Yes, so, in general terms, what will happen is, both the annual town meeting and the special town meeting are scheduled for 9:00 AM on May 3. The moderator will open up the annual town meeting, and then recess it, and the annual town meeting will be in recess, and then we'll move over to the special town meeting. The special town meeting will be opened, and the articles of the special town meeting will be taken immediately. So, we won't even get to Article One of the annual town meeting before the special town meeting is taken up in its entirety. That has two articles, it will be random draw, so it could be two and then one, or one and then two. Random draw, that still exists. So, this is, these are, again, as has been discussed, the identical articles, so what was put forward in the December 7 special time meeting? Once that town, the special time meeting is adjourned, we will reopen the annual town meeting and start with Article One. And so, then we'll proceed through the annual town meeting, obviously, as regular until we're...
Are there questions on that from the board?
No.
And as you mentioned, the articles, we just might as well go through them again, Article One and Article Two, as it relates to MBT Communities Act, these are exactly what people were asked of in the fall.
Yes, so the first one, as you mentioned, as a member West mentioned, is a majority vote to adopt the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. The second one is a 2/3 majority vote to add that district to our inclusionary zoning bylaw. And those are, that's the special time meeting.
Great, so just as a reminder, folks at home, the town meeting and the special town meeting are Saturday, May 3, 9:00 AM, beginning at 9:00 AM at Wilmington High School's auditorium. They will, the articles, each of them will be discussed at next Tuesday's joint meeting of the Planning Board and Finance Committee, that night and later that week, I believe, the Finance Committee...
The 20th, I believe.
The 20th, I think, a couple days later, the Finance Committee will make recommendations, Planning Board will make their recommendations, and then this information will be distributed out on our website, so folks can take a look if they're curious, so they have questions. And then later, as I mentioned, in April, this document will be mailed to all residents leading up to the May 3 town meeting. So...
Can I just make a real quick point about that? I actually think that's a really important thing that this town does that not every town does, is make sure that each individual in town gets a copy of the warrant before town meeting. The last town I worked in did not do that, and so I think it's really a spectacular thing for the town to do, to make sure everybody gets a copy of that, so, impressed.
Thank you, and they're also usually available at the meeting, too, if you forget yours, lose yours, or...
Through the chair, and I, forgive me, I probably should have asked this when Valerie was here, but I was just taking note of this. So we're deleting the current inclusionary zoning and then adding a whole brand-new one. Why are we just not adding in that component of the MBTA portion? Why do we have to delete the current one to add in?
Kevin, you were next, Article...
Article Two.
Two.
Article Two of the special town meeting. We're deleting the current inclusionary zoning and replacing it with the following. So, has a lot of the language changed?
There's some specific requirements from the MBTA zoning, if you want to make it inclusionary, and my recollection is, trying to force it into our pre-existing language is very stilted.
Okay.
And so rather than try and make it something that was a little bit less, you know, that flowed, flowed in, you know, in a way that made sense to the people who are reading it, rather than try and stick in the requirements that were from the MBTA zoning, they just rewrite it so that it flowed better, and they, you know...
Just bring the building down and just, it's easy.
Rebuild it again, yeah.
Cost less money.
Right, I've heard that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, we're going to move on to communications this evening. Mr. Manager, we have a number of memos, beginning with one from our DPW director, Mr. McGoldy.
Yes, so the, it was alluded to earlier by Member West, communications from Jamie McGoldy regarding water regulations appeal update and revised outdoor water use restrictions guidance documents. So, I'm hopeful that the board will remember, back in 2003, Wilmington was one of a bunch of different public water systems that appealed to challenge the state's new 10-year water registrations, which regulate the amount of water taken from a local aquifer. Unfortunately, we've reached the endpoint of that litigation, and we are not successful. So, what that means is, at this point in time, we need to start taking steps to implement the requirements of those 10-year water registrations. In an effort to make sure we were compliant, we reached out to, and I want to give Jamie McGoldy and Jill Labeau a lot of credit on this, they worked really closely with our consultants and with town council to try and come up with a way that did this in the least impactful way possible. The important issues are that the state requires notice of potential items that you, water users may use with, that may be violations under drought conditions, and also requires that we have an enforcement mechanism to do enforcement. So we submitted our current bylaw to... So we submitted our current bylaw to the, to town council to make sure that our current bylaw met the minimum thresholds that were required by the state. Town council determined that it did meet those minimum thresholds, but suggested that in an effort to be very, very clear, that we put forward what you would see as those Page Two and Three of that, the submission, which are summary of the revised outdoor water use restrictions, a guidance document. These are the realities that the town has to live with, and so they're going to be posted on the Water Department's website, they're going to go out in a water bill so that all of our water users know that this is the, kind of the, kind of the reality of life under the new ten-year water restrictions from the state.
So just in case people are keeping track at home, in just this one meeting, we have heard state mandates in return, in regards to ADUs, MBTA Community Housing Act, and now water regulation. In case you were keeping track at home.
So our goal, again, is to make this as, to happen as much within our current kind of standard operating procedures as possible. So Jamie and Joe believe, and with advice of council, believe that if we have this guidance document on our, on our website and we are consistent about notifications for folks when we're in a drought and these, these restrictions apply, that should be sufficient for us to do our compliance with, at the state level. So that was providing that to the board.
Thank you.
The second document was from Jamie McGoldy regarding the vegetation management plan renewal. We are required every five years to submit a draft vegetation management plan. This is the third VMP that DPW has submitted. So this is just providing notice that we've submitted that vegetation management plan. MDR submitted the legal advertisement, there's a link on DPW with all the hearing and relevant information at the DPW website. It's also been submitted to social media, the Wilmington Apple, the Tom Crier, to try to let folks know if they have any comments about these. I believe it's substantially similar to the last vegetation management plan that's now submitted.
Thank you.
In lighter news, we have an invitation from the Wilmington Little League to attend the 2025 opening day parade and ceremony, which is Saturday, April nineteenth, 2025. Participants who marched in the parade will arrive at eight-thirty at the Fourth of July Building and end at Rotary Park around nine-thirty or nine-forty-five. The opening ceremony and first pitch will take place at ten, and the first game, major's game is set to begin about ten-thirty. So that was an invitation to all the members of the board to come out and watch some baseball.
Good sign of spring.
The third is a letter from Mark Healy regarding our Chapter Ninety apportionment for FY 2026. So this letter just is notice to the town that we are getting the funding formula that gives our Wilmington Chapter Ninety apportionment for FY 26 as $1,106,268.05. So that's our Chapter Ninety. In past years, the, the state has in mid-year or in mid-cycle come up with some additional Chapter Ninety funding. It's not clear whether or not that's going to be the case in FY 26. I do know that that happened, that's happened in past years where we've gotten additional funding from the state, I think, at this point in time. There's a lot up in the air about the state budget now, so it's not clear whether or not that's going to happen. And our final communication is a notice in accordance with Chapter 149, Section 179B, and Chapter 151, Section 71B. Kovala Separation Solutions LLC, which was a business located at 850 Main Street, is expected to be permanently closed in the near future, starting on April thirtieth, 2025, and ending on June thirtieth, 2025. Approximately 100 employees will be affected.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Chair.
It's unfortunate.
Yes, it is unfortunate.
Okay, thank you for the memorandums. Next up is our Board to Consider. We have a number, we'll begin with number six, which is a Board to Consider Closing and Signing the Warrant for the Annual Town Meeting. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
So moved.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Point of order, how do you keep your options open if you're closing the warrant?
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you kindly not to disrupt the meeting again, thank you. Mr. Wes, you're the winner. Motion was made by Mr. Wes.
Mr. Wes.
Excuse me. All right, you got to me. Mr. Wes, thank you for your motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, sir. Seconded by Mrs. DePalma.
I'm a second.
Thank you.
No ice cream for you tonight, Gary.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number seven is a Board to Consider Closing and Signing the Warrant for a Special Town Meeting, to be held May third.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. DePalma, is there a second?
I'll make a second for discussion.
Seconded from his discussion by Mr. Wes.
Yeah, and I, and I just want to say real quick that, again, like in my case, I'm going to vote no at the special town meeting, but to your point, Mr. Chair, you know, we are keeping options open. There will be a lot more information between now and May third. You know, maybe it's positive, maybe it's negative, we, you know, we won't know, maybe we file for an exemption, maybe we don't. But I think that, you know, I think by keeping the article open, excuse me, by keeping, by closing the warrant and having the special town meeting, we are, you know, we're giving one last bite at the apple for our residents, and like you said, there are people that might be, might have been a yes vote, and now a no vote, there might have been people that are no vote, might be a yes, so we'll let the democratic process win out.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, and I would only add that, too, that by us doing this doesn't preclude us from withdrawing any articles leading up to the very last moment, the day of, if something was to change. You know, I'm not forecasting anything, but it could be withdrawn. And again, this is part of what I believe is the process of keeping our options open, to your point. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes four to one. Item number eight is a Board to Consider, and this is not a state mandate, believe it or not, just want to make that clear. Board to Consider Adopting the Town Manager Evaluation Tool and Process for the Evaluation. As you recall, over the last couple of months, we've come to a mutual agreement on what we believe the tool will be to evaluate our new town manager going forward, and so would anybody like to make a motion to adopt this evaluation tool?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? The only thing I would add for discussion is my hope, and I wanted to say this before the vote, so just, is that folks would, if we do have a vote, affirmative vote this evening for this tool to be adopted, my goal would to have this performance evaluation on April fourteenth, as what we discussed kind of at the onset of the hiring of a new town manager. Therefore, if the vote passes, we would like to distribute electronically and in paper the evaluation tool to each member so that you have your preference, if you have electronic or if you prefer, you know, paper, to fill it out, and we, I'd like to be able to, if the vote passes, get that out to you sooner than later, so you have plenty of time to do that, and then my hope would be to try to collect that from you as chair on around April seventh, which would give me one week to compile it, to then be presented at the April fourteenth meeting. So again, if, my hope is that perhaps if we get a affirmative vote tonight, then the materials could be distributed as early as, later this week, so that you have a couple of weeks to go over it, and having done it before, it does take a little bit of time. You know, it's quite a big homework assignment, but an important one. And then I would hope you would understand that, and I know Mr. DePalma can understand that having, to have to compile that information from four other colleagues, including your own, does take a little bit of time, too, so, and I know some other of my past colleagues have gone through that as well. So that was my plan, I wanted to lay that out there before we took the vote. Is there any objection to that timeline? Okay, great. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Here it is, so we will have the performance evaluation materials distributed to members as soon as possible.
Yes.
Electronically and in paper, and again, once again, I'll have, I'll kindly ask Ms. Dalton to send out a reminder about April seventh, trying to get the information back so we can present it on April fourteenth. Thank you for that. Next up, we have a Board to Consider from the one, the only Chris Neville to use the town beach at Silver Lake and the beach house for, for the Rotary and Rotary Interact members to participate in the polar plunge at eleven AM on Saturday, March fifteenth, or Saturday, March twenty-second, or Saturday, March twenty-ninth. Date will be dependent upon lake being cleared of ice.
And I was glad to hear that you indicated to me that you were going to be participating in this, huh?
That's right, right before your performance evaluation. Okay.
Forward or after?
I might need it afterwards.
Fortunately for me, it's warmed up this week. As always, this is a good one, I do this every year. Anybody want to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra's, their discussion. I appreciate them doing this, good luck to everybody, hopefully it's a somewhat of a warm day.
I hope so.
More of a plunge, not a polar plunge.
Yeah.
Good luck to them all. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Going to remember that, Slagel. Item number ten is a, to ratify the town manager's appointment for Charlie Proto-Pappas as a member of the Redding Municipal Light Department Citizens Advisory Board effective April first, 2025, for a term to expire on April thirtieth, 2028. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded by Mrs. Misselli, thank you. Any discussion? Appreciate Charlie's willingness to step up and fill this role. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number eleven is a request from Ms. Erica Marshawn, Code One BBQ, to amend their common victual license to reflect the change in location. Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything to this one?
Yeah, just, just, I think folks knew where the old location of Code One BBQ was in the, in the plaza across the street from Market Basket, and now it will be moving into the Market Basket Plaza to a space I believe is significantly larger than their existing space. And so this is just a request to transfer that, that common vic license over to the new space across the street.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Wes, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. DePalma. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous, best of luck to them and their new location. Item number twelve is a Board to Consider the Request of the Wilmington Town Common Be Illuminated in Blue During the Month of April in Observance with, of Artemis Awareness Month. This is another strong tradition in town.
I'll make a...
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mrs. Misselli, thank you. Any discussion? This is also going to be kindly donated by an anonymous person, correct?
Yes, anonymous donor, will pay for the gels.
We appreciate that person, whoever you are. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Finally, the Board to Consider, their summer meeting schedule, proposed dates are currently July fourteenth and August eighteenth. Does anybody have any objections or concerns? Alternatives? Hearing none, does anybody like to make a motion to set the dates of July fourteenth and August eighteenth as the summer meeting dates?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Good, I know when to set my DVR. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
As if you won't be watching live.
Be watching.
Like he said, he's going to set his DVR, he said he's going to watch it.
Thank you. So those dates are set, July fourteenth, August eighteenth. Mark your calendars. Public comment, would anyone like to make a public comment? Sir, good evening.
Good evening. Usually when communities are faced with 100 jobs being lost, they put an effort into reaching out to their legislative delegation to stop that or try to help that from happening. I haven't heard anything like that tonight. Mr. Bendel, I was very disappointed, and I think that you, meeting with the manager relative to exemptions and not bringing it forth, forth to the board, was disrespectful to the other members of the board and highly inappropriate. With regard to a handout that I passed out the last meeting, which was sort of a blueprint for a path to an exemption, which is a home rule petition, I haven't heard any discussion tonight on home rule petitions or a method to find a way for an exemption. And on top of that, you actually voted to close the warrant tonight, and you said that you wanted to keep all your options open. I don't know how you keep all your options open when you vote to close a special town meeting warrant and an annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Manager, I'm glad you recognize that it's appropriate to send out warrant books. Unfortunately, it gets sent out like a couple of days before the meeting and people have a very limited time to review it. I think it would be appropriate to send that out in advance with the dollar amounts on it. I'd like to read something here. Bait and switch tactics are often considered to be a type of fraud and therefore is illegal. Bait and switch scams can fall under a number of violations from breach of contract to false advertising. I bring this up because there was a special town meeting held at the Shriners for a vote for preschool and early education billing. That vote has since turned into this monstrosity project proposal for a $250 million school that will triple their taxes and force seniors out of town, and I say that because it's three times as much as the high school cost, and we were told when the high school was built that your taxes were only going to go up the cost of a cup of coffee a day, and people saw their taxes doubled. People were lied to and they were told that their, their taxes were only going to go up a cup of coffee a day. And then you mentioned tonight that the Town Hall School Administration Building only passed by seven votes, and one of the reasons why it passed is because our finance committee chairman deceived the people in saying that you're, it wasn't going to affect your taxes. Then it goes out for a bond offering, and people saw their taxes go up with that. In addition to that, the town has the ability to put the MBTA zoning article on the fall ballot question, which is going to be presented to the people to vote on that $250 million school. And I will say this, that I've talked to people who maintain the North, who work at the North, and they state to me that the North Intermediate School is one of our best schools in town. There's been, a fortune put in to that school with new windows, new roof, parking lot, I believe there's a new kitchen, but to knock that school down is absolutely insane and is disrespectful to the, to the people of Wilmington. In addition to that, I wanted to mention that the Inspector General's Office, the state Inspector General's Office, was created because of corruption in public building projects. So that should be duly noted. When I looked at, when I've attended the finance committee meetings on the schools, I was absolutely shocked to find out that Wilmington Public Schools have a cost of $18,000 per student, and then to find out that the Shawshank Tech is costing us $32,000 per student, and I just don't understand why. And then we hear that the Shawshank Tech wants to build a new school. So there you go, knock down a school that's fully functioning and have massively more debt for the people of Wilmington. So I actually have a proposal, and maybe one of you will ask Mr. Bendel to put it on the agenda, because I know that he would never put it on there if I asked him, and that is to have a special town meeting to eliminate the Town Hall School Administration Building and convert it into town vocational shops. Because we keep hearing that our money is going way up for the Shawshank Tech, and it will go up further if they want to build a new school, and the most disturbed... And the most disturbing thing that I heard the other night from the superintendent from the Shawshin Tech School was that Wilmington students can get into the Shawshin Tech in hopes that they're going to become an electrician or a plumber or some other trade, and then after being there a year, when they have to choose their trade, they can be locked out, they can be denied room into that trade. And I think that is unbelievably disrespectful to the students and highly inappropriate. And so therefore, I think we've got some problems with that school, the process, and I think we need to look at it a little bit closer.
Thank you, Mr. McCall.
The other thing I just wanted to mention about fraudulent overbudgeting.
Mr. McCall, I do want to check to see if anyone else.
Fraudulent overbudgeting can occur when a budget is intentionally.
Excuse me, sir.
For it to cover up other issues or to benefit a certain group of people.
Okay, I guess we're going to move on.
And this can be detrimental to the city services and taxpayers.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Mr. McCall. We're going to move on to the next portion.
Yeah.
I do want to check if anyone else would like to be heard. Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up, we have announcements this evening. Would anyone like to offer an announcement?
Mr. Bendel.
Mr. West.
Actually, two quick announcements. One, I think we should be mentioning that town hall hours are changing. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 4:30, Tuesday from 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And that starts on April 1st, so just another way to get the word out for that.
It's an important dates.
It's an important dates, too. And the other thing is is that I know the board got an email from Matt over at the Hardin Tavern. He's the curator of the Hardin Tavern, and just want to let both the board, manager, and the public know that the Hardin Tavern is going to be doing an open house, and Wilmington Minutemen will have an installation of offices on the 23rd, March 23rd, at 1:00 p.m. There'll be some outside activities, weather permitting, and they'll actually have the host of former Wilmington Minutemen captains from the 80s and up. That'll be in attendance, so if anybody wants to come, there's refreshments, so food is always an enticement. So I just thought I'd offer it up to the board, manager, assistant manager, public, certainly. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? How about new business? Is there any new business this evening, Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, I have new business, Mr. Chair, for the manager, and certainly don't want to spot you tonight because I'm bringing it forward, so maybe a memo or something would be helpful. I'm just wondering where we are in the process for finding a new OPM for the new school. SMMAs contract runs out, I believe, the end of April, and we're already into March. I would assume that the RFP is prepared and ready to go to look into that. So we don't want to let that fall into a big, a big black hole of emptiness. So if you don't have a response tonight, I understand, because I'm bringing it up on you, a memo would be fine if you want to.
I'll definitely have a response for that on the 24th, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members have new business? Mr. West.
Yeah, again, you know, like I mentioned earlier about, you know, the possibility of at least exploring the exemption for the MBTA 3A. I'd like to see if we could, you know, find out what the other communities have done, if there's a way to, you know, bring something forward so that we can have a discussion, either an open session or executive. I'm not sure how that's going to fall, but I think is, again, like I said, I think we owe it to the taxpayers that voted, which was the majority vote, that voted no on the issue in the past.
Right, and I agree, and I suspect that that will be the case on the next meeting, which is the 24th. I just want, again, as I said, just want to make sure that we provided all members with every piece of information that we possibly had. That wasn't going to be the case had we done it tonight, so.
And that's smart. We appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, just to, I have reached out to KP Law. As the chair mentioned, they do have other clients who are going through this process. So my goal is to between now and the agenda setting for the 24th, to get all our ducks in a row so that if the board does wish to move forward, we can move forward on the 25th, basically by just telling KP Law to go. So I'll ask, I'll get the information from Mark as to what they need from us if we needed to go forward.
And the other thing I would be willing to commit to my colleagues is that obviously if there was some earth-shattering news that came before that, we wouldn't wait till the agenda came out. Obviously, we'd ask the manager to kindly share that with all board members.
Absolutely.
Because I recognize, I think we all recognize the importance of this, and certainly everyone's paying close attention, so we want to make sure we're on top of it as well. I appreciate that. Any other members have new business?
I have some new business, Mr. Bendel.
That's great. Next up, we have important dates.
The reason why I rise to new business.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. We are. Thank you very much, sir. If you could please have us take a seat. You're welcome to stay, but you need to be seated, sir. You can actually stand up if you'd like, but we're going to conduct the meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is, how do you, if payments are predicated upon the board approving it, how do you actually comply with the law?
Sir, I've asked you very kindly. Thank you very much for enlightening us. Thank you.
Thank you.
On March 8th. You're welcome. March 18th.
March 18th, we have a Finance Committee Planning Board public hearing. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, this is the third time that the agenda, the warrant articles are going to be discussed by the Finance Committee and the Planning Board. So please tune in or come down to Town Hall in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. Then March 19th, we have a Town Hall School Administration Building Committee, which is at Town Hall Room 9 at 6:00 p.m. March 20th, we have a Finance Committee meeting at Town Hall Room 9, 7:00 p.m., where they will take up and vote on the items for the warrant for the annual town meeting. March 24th, as we mentioned, is our next Select Board meeting here at Town Hall Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. On April 1st, as Mr. West mentioned, we'll be having amended Town Hall hours that will be in effect Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, we'll have an extended day from 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then Friday, we will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. So anybody who needs to come very early in the morning, Friday, we'll have an extra half an hour of availability to the public on those days. April 14th, we'll have another Select Board meeting here at Town Hall Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Reminder that April 16th is the last date to register to vote in the annual town election and at the annual town meeting, and the town clerk's office will be open until 5:00 p.m. that day. On April 21st, Town Hall offices will be closed for Patriots Day. On April 26th, we have the annual town election. The polls are open from 8:00 to 8:00, so please come down and vote. April 28th, we have a Select Board meeting here at Town Hall Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. And then the lead-up to the annual town meeting, May 3rd, at the High School Auditorium, annual town meeting and special town meeting, the High School Auditorium at 9:00 a.m., again on May 3rd. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And as was mentioned, a few other important dates coming up as well. The Little League Parade and the event at the Hardin Tavern, so a lot of good stuff coming up. Lastly, salute to services with actually great sadness that we present this salute to service to Mr. James M. Capozzi, who we hoped we could salute. He had fallen ill, for those of you, and I know some of my colleagues are very good friends with Mr. Capozzi, had fallen ill unfortunately, and we hoped that we could get him, get this word to him, but unfortunately, we just learned that he just did pass over the weekend. We want to obviously send our condolences to his family, but nonetheless, that will not prevent us from still honoring him and his service. So with that said, Mr. James Capozzi served in the U.S. Army from 1969 to 1970 as a part of the 11th Armored Cavalry Regiment. He received many medals, including National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, and was also awarded the Purple Heart Medal for his injuries sustained in Vietnam. Mr. Capozzi, a Wilmington High School graduate, returned to Wilmington after Vietnam, where he and his wife Deb raised their beautiful children, Matt and Lisa. And James is a true family man, and his family was his entire world. And so we salute him for his service, we thank him for his service to our country, and we send our deepest condolences to his family and friends. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Good night, everyone.